I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 27, 2015, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file?
Yes, in our table file, we've got some actual replacements, slides for slides 25, 26, and 27 in the Child Nutrition Budget Report. And again, these slides were added to provide you with additional information on the current adopted 2014-15 budget, as well as the revised and proposed budget for 1516. And Val and Stephanie put that together, so we have those for you to look at. In addition, we have a number of employment elements, including appointments, increases, decreases, and changes in assignment, and resignations at this time. So I would recommend that we place these on the consent agenda and/or into the reports where they belong.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets minutes for the regular school board meeting held on April 13. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Second? Second by Ann. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, April 13, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Carry, those minutes are approved. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Right, I have a number, and then there may be board members that have others. We'll see here. First of all, this year, the Northfield Middle School had a record number of singers that were chosen to represent our 6th to 8th grade boys' and girls' ensembles in various state honor choirs in their competition. The state honor choir program is sponsored by the American Choral Directors Association of Minnesota. They sponsor six honor choirs annually, providing outstanding enrichment opportunities in choral performance for over 700 students. Typically, over 2,000 students audition each year. In order to be selected for one of the competition honor choirs, students from around the state, together with their directors, prepare an online blind audition that was scored by a selection committee made up of choral directors trained with special adjudication and screening skills. Five of our 7th and 8th grade middle school singers were chosen and performed last November. The 8th grade, excuse me, the 6th grade students chosen will be performing in May. And I'm sorry, I do not have the names of those individuals at this time. Second, we'd like to thank all of our generous community sponsors, donors, volunteers for tremendous support of this year's 8th grade Fun Fest on April the 10th. We had over 200 8th graders attending the event. Third, we had four Greenville Park 4th grade girls, Jane Amrood, Riley Lane, Maggie Muth, and Lucia Welcome, who started a community service project called Change for Change at Greenville Park. They wanted to raise funds for new recess equipment. Any change brought in during the week allowed each student a voice as to what they would like to see for the new recess equipment at GPP. As of last Friday, the final total had reached over $3,500. Now, the equipment will be ordered, which the girls selected based on safety, durability, and fun for all. Also, good news from Bridgewater. Students at Bridgewater have raised $13,326 for the American Heart Association through their annual Jump Rope Heart event during the week of April the 6th. Bridgewater has participated in this event since its opening back in 1998, and over that time has collected over $119,000. Obviously, great work on their part. Also, Northfield Public Schools Community Service Division application for Pathway 2 Early Learning Scholarships has received approval by the Minnesota Department of Education. Erin gives us a little note here. This is pending final passage of the fiscal year 2016 education budget. The Pathway 2 scholarship allocation for the program is $35,000 for fiscal year 2016. Early childhood scholarship dollars will be used to support adding a five-day-per-week preschool class with a capacity of 12 scholarship students to attend, provide transportation for preschool and parent education events, provide one parent education and/or family event each month from September through June, purchase evidence-based curriculum for our early ventures childcare program, continue to provide wraparound care spots for our preschool students as requested, increase the number of students served in bridges to kindergarten by 25 students, and increase collaboration between early childhood teachers and kindergarten staff. And obviously, that money will go a long way toward providing support for our preschool age students. Also, would like to recognize National School Nurse Day, which is coming up on Wednesday, May the 6th. And please take an opportunity to thank the nurse in your building. They work very, very hard to keep our students and staff healthy and safe, and they really do deserve our appreciation. Also, congratulations to Matt Hillman and Alberta Storf, Director of Finance, and the entire business office for receiving the School Finance Award. The School Finance Award is awarded annually by the Minnesota Department of Education to recognize schools for meeting statutory deadlines for submission. And we actually have won that award several times, but we thought it was about time that we told people about it. So, all good. And also, as part of that, it's looking at their audit of fiscal financial data and reporting criteria. Out of 549 eligible reporting entities, 390 met the qualifying criteria for fiscal year 2015 School Finance Award. And then finally, I'd like to recognize our Knowledge Bowl team. Basically, there were 944 teams across the state of Minnesota that participated in the Knowledge Bowl this year. Of those, the top 48 teams went to the State Knowledge Bowl Championship in Brainerd on April 9th and 10th. Northfield basically competed against teams in the AA or large school division, and we placed 7th in the state in terms of the Knowledge Bowl. To give you a little idea of what Knowledge Bowl was like, I think there's a new TV show coming on about 500 questions or whatever. But basically, at the state meet, four-person teams compete against one another in 160-question written round and five oral rounds of interdisciplinary questions for a total of 285 questions that they need to be able to answer. Success at the competition requires the ability to work as a team, as well as to recall information quickly in a variety of areas of study. Knowledge Bowl is sponsored by the 11 service cooperatives throughout the state. So, again, congratulations to our Knowledge Bowl team. And that's all I have right now.
Does anyone have anything they would like to add? I wanted to just make note that we were able to have a mock crash again today at the high school, and the number of service or safety organizations, law enforcement, it's a combination and a collaboration of a lot of different agencies within the county, as well as some local community members. And I didn't attend this year, but I've been there in the past, and it's actually an incredible display that they put on, and it's always lots of quiet. There's not a lot of kids. It's a very somber thing, and hopefully, just prior to prom, it's good timing, and we hope that our district and students will have a safe prom. And we thank those agencies for doing that, because it's a huge undertaking, and it's really, hopefully, very impactful for our students. Okay, so we can move on, then, to items for discussion and reports, and we'll begin with the proposed 2015-16 Child Nutrition Budget. And we welcome with today Stephanie Strame, who is the district's Child Nutrition Director, who is with us for the first time.
And I think Matt is going to give you a brief intro, and then we're going to let Stephanie -- Stephanie already introduced herself through food.
Yeah, so wise move, bringing samples, yes.
Always a wise move, exactly.
Demonstrates intelligence. I'm just very privileged to welcome Stephanie Strame to our board meeting for the first time. And we hired Stephanie last December, and really felt like we got very fortunate to get such a high-quality individual. She has certainly made her mark already. Some of the things, I won't steal all of her thunder, but the collaborative work she's done with organizations like the Community Action Center and the Greenville Park Community School, some of those things will come out. She's a collaborator and a networker, and willing to do whatever it takes to make a successful program. And so, we are thrilled to welcome her here tonight, and she's going to tell you a little bit about herself as well.
Thanks, Matt. Hello. First of all, I just want to take a few minutes to introduce myself and thank all of you for inviting me here this evening to spend some time with you, introduce myself to you, and tell you a little bit about what's been going on in the child nutrition world at Northfield Schools for the past school year. I have lived in Northfield for the past nine years, and this has been a career goal of mine, to become the Child Nutrition Director for Northfield Schools. To put myself in that position, some of the things that I've done over the past few years prior to coming here, I was the Child Nutrition Director at New Prague Schools for their district. And prior to that, I worked at Upper Lakes Foods, which is a food distribution company, for seven years as their corporate dietitian, and then also as their district manager of their healthcare division. So I had a lot of experience, worked with a lot of brokers, manufacturers, schools, administrators, just a whole variety of people that enabled me to prepare myself for this position. I have three children who attend the district, and two girls who are here in the high school, and then I have a son who attends 4th grade at Greenville Park Elementary. Just for some of you who do know, some of you don't, my husband works up at St. Olaf. He's the women's basketball coach up there, so we are very involved in athletics and really support the community as a whole, and enjoy being very involved in Northfield. Now, I'd like to take this time, first of all, to go over, many of you know, the mission of Northfield Public Schools is to deliver educational excellence that empowers all learners to participate in our dynamic world. The Child Nutrition Services mission is to provide quality nutritious meals that support the growth and development of our students to fuel their learning. This year, we faced a few challenges that were mandated. First of all, this is a photo of Sibley Elementary. Throughout my presentation, you'll see a lot of photos that I've taken at the various schools of just the different things that we are providing for our children. This was taken at the salad bar at Sibley Elementary, and just the offering of fresh fruits and vegetables that we do each day. As I had mentioned, one of the biggest challenges that we faced this year from the government and the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act were the Smart Snack requirements that were implemented in effective July 1, 2014. What this entailed was that any food that's been sold in the schools must meet four qualifications. It must be whole grain rich, or it must have the first ingredient as a fruit, vegetable, dairy product, or a protein food, or be a combination food that contains at least one-fourth cup of fruit or vegetables, and also, it could contain 10% of the daily value of one of the nutrients, calcium, potassium, vitamin D, or dietary fiber. Now, one of those items must be met one of those standards, but in addition to that, those Smart Snack Guidelines have to meet all of these requirements. So in order for us to sell any of the à la carte items to our students, or to staff, or anyone, they need to meet these four requirements. Calorie limits, so the snack items have to be less than 200 calories. Entrees, less than 350 calories. When we're looking at sodium limits, the snack items need to be less than 230 milligrams, and entrees, less than 480 milligrams. Fat limits, again, need to have achievable limits of less than 35% calories from total fat, less than 10% from saturated fat, and zero grams of trans fat. And the sugar limit also is based on the weight from the total sugar in foods, and this needs to be less than 35% of weight from total sugars in foods. Now, some of the snacks, actually, those cookies that I serve to you do meet all of those requirements. Yes, Dr. Richardson loves those cookies, right?
It was a lovely cookie. Now, I'll go back knowing it's --
But it's only one document.
Oh, I can only remember one, I'm sorry.
It is, yes. I didn't specify that. We are limited in that way. But, no, so there are items out there that we are finding. We're continually trying new products with the children to see, and do taste testing with them to see what items that they're enjoying, what items we'll sell for them. This is a picture of the Greenville Elementary snack cart, and some of the kids very excited to get their snacks in the morning when they're going off, and all of those snacks, again, meet those requirements. They also implemented nutrition standards for beverages sold in schools. So all schools can sell plain water, regular milk that's either 1% or skim, and then anything that is flavored has to be fat-free. And in our district, we just serve the chocolate milk, but it is a fat-free chocolate milk. We can also sell 100% fruit or vegetable juice blends, and then anything that's 100% fruit or vegetable juice that is carbonated or not carbonated, and has been diluted with water without any additional sweeteners. Again, the portion sizes are restricted, so, again, we encourage just one of these items, like Dr. Richardson, not more than one. So the milk and juice for elementary students can be up to eight ounces for their portion of milk. High schools, up to 12 ounces, and really, we don't go up to 12 ounces for the high school currently. There is no portion on the plain water, and beyond this, we're really looking at the high schools. And I'll just kind of skip over this very quickly, but the elementary schools are only allowed milk and juice, but then when we get into the high school or the middle schools, they're able to have beverages that have about 20-ounce portions, if they're calorie-free or flavored water, so things like the ice beverages that you see sold around with the carbonation, we're able to include those. The naked juices, as long as it's a small enough, eight to 12, no more than 12 ounces, that we can be serving for them. And so, we're really restricted on the amount of calories that we're serving these students. We know that beverages is a lot of extra calories that people are consuming. So although we like them to stay well hydrated, we just don't want them to have all of these extra calories from beverages. One of the biggest things that we've faced with the Smart Snacks is the fundraisers, and we're finding, because that entails the whole school, there's a lot of fundraisers out there that people have been doing for many years, and they've been very successful, and now they're a little bit restricted with that. The sale of food items that meet nutrition requirements at fundraisers are not limited in any way. So if they met any of those previous Smart Snack Guidelines that I mentioned, the students are able to sell those as fundraisers. Anything that is sold after school hours also does not need to fall within those guidelines, and what school hours are considered is to be midnight from the night before to 30 minutes after that bell rings. So really, if a student were to come in at 6:00 in the morning and want to buy something that didn't meet those guidelines, they wouldn't be able to do that. So that's been a challenge. We've had some groups who really want to try some fun, unique, great things, and we're just not able to do that because it doesn't meet the standards. And then there's also a special exemption, but each state agency was allowed to choose whether they wanted to do that, and Minnesota chose to be a zero-exemption state. So we are required to follow and meet all of those standards. Just one little additional comment, any accompaniments. Again, a challenge we face is, a lot of times, we can sell these great items that fit those guidelines in our à la carte, but then it's all of those accompaniments that the kids want to add to them. We found a pizza that works great, but we see a lot of kids who want to add ranch dip to that pizza. Well, technically, we have to include that ranch dip then in all of those requirements, and then it wouldn't meet those guidelines. So we've had to pull some of those things away from the children to be able to purchase. Some of the Smart Snack-approved à la carte items that we have introduced, because we did see an initial loss of revenue due to the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act Smart Snack Guidelines, we made some changes. Starting in about January, we implemented individual pizzas, which students, and I do know staff too, have commented on how much they're enjoying the individual pizzas. An Asian bowl line, which we kind of alternate that between a lemongrass chicken that they can have, a mandarin orange chicken, and then a kung po chicken, and that's served with brown rice, so they're able to purchase that. And then we do have a pasta line that's available every day where they can have a whole grain pasta with, you know, having a meat sauce on it. Sometimes we'll have a ravioli that fits and meets those guidelines as well. So we have seen an increase in sales by about 2%. We've also allowed students to purchase mainline items as an à la carte item, and they can purchase those on the same day, but the following day, we're allowing them to purchase that mainline item to minimize unfocused production waste. And, Matt, as you may know, this is a fancy term for what?
Leftovers.
Yeah. But these are good leftovers.
These are good leftovers, yes, yes. And we are trying to have it in packages so that students can see what they're eating, rather than having it always maybe steamed over, so they don't know exactly what they're purchasing. So we're toying with different packaging that we can use for that. We did also have our administrative review this year. It was held in January, and it was supposed to be a four-day review. Pam Hout, the previous director, and Sheri Malika from the middle school, she's the kitchen manager, really have prepared us well in Northfield Schools. We are really lucky because our school has just grown and developed into meeting all of these demands, and we faced these challenges over a longer period of time, so it hasn't been such a struggle that we've seen in some other districts. So the review was held at Bridgewater Middle School, at Bridgewater and at the middle school, and they really focus on that we're meeting all of the compliance that's set federally and by the state. Some of the commendations that we received from the state reviewers were that students at Northfield Schools are provided with several fresh fruit and vegetable options daily. Staff members at each site showed compassion and diligence in their jobs. This is just a picture at one of the schools, showing the variety that we serve each day, and we found that by serving a variety, the students get to pick, do I want an apple, do I want a banana that day? So we're seeing less waste go in the garbage, because they're actually picking what they want, rather than needing to just take something to take it, to complete the meal. They also commented on how Northfield Public Schools, or they commended us -- Oops. Was that something that I did?
Did I do that?
Good to have the iTunes open, everyone. You've got my back, right?
It's good, we got technology all around you.
So they commended us for receiving minimal errors in processing our applications for educational benefits. They had to review over 300 applications, and within that, they only found two that needed to be addressed, and so that's amazing. So that was really wonderful. Breakfast has been suggested to positively affect learning in children in terms of their behavior, cognitive, and school performance. We're excited to report that for the school year of 2014-15, we did see an increase in our participation in breakfast. For the full-price students, you'll see we were up 150% in participation from last year. Part of this reason, a big part of it, I feel, is that we did receive free breakfast for all kindergartners, so we're seeing a much greater participation with that group of students. And then we did also see an increase in the free breakfast and the reduced-price meals as well. Reduced-price meals was probably up a little bit higher than the free, because all reduced-price meals were reimbursed by the state, so that the meals were received to the student as a free meal. One other thing that we're really focusing on trying to do is to include more recipes for our lunch, rather than pre-made. I did bring in a hickama apple slop that some of you guys have tried, and I know Dr. Richardson will probably try it at that.
Of course. But if I can't wash it down with another cookie, I'm not -- and I only can have one, right?
Okay. This is a photo of a middle school meal, and what we have here is the whole grain rotini and a diced squash. The diced squash was actually, we found they were serving it plain without any seasoning, and one of our kitchen managers went and seasoned it with something that she had learned from a recipe, just a very simple, a little bit of oil was drizzled on there, and a variety of seasonings. And the times we had served squash before, we had had three pans prepared, and we went through like one pan in all of our service lines. And the day that she served this, I think we went through a full pan by the end of the first service, and she had only made like a pan and a half, because she knew from production records before kids were eating squash. So it was really fun to see that kids were eating and trying some of these products. Some new things that we've done, we have added additional cold meal options at the ALC, so that they can choose and select a lot of these items each day, and we're finding greater meal participation for those students at ALC. Greenville Park, we implemented a salad bar for them, and we're seeing that continually about 25 meals are being sold from the salad bar at Greenville Park each day. It's something that they had kind of been asking about trying, so we said we would certainly try it, and as long as it continues to be successful, we'll continue on with it. The community meal schools, I want to forward here, because I have a few pictures. At Greenville Park, it's been great, because we've partnered with community services, and part of the grant money was to provide a community meal. Two weeks ago, we served the first meal, and it was to our kindergarten families. We served over 150 people, and it was really fun. I think the second week, it was about the same 150 people, families and their siblings and everybody. So it was just really fun to see all of the students come out with their families and enjoy a meal together, and then a fun evening event at Greenville Park. Also, on my slide of what's new, something that we're hoping to implement at the high school, which is something I did in New Prague Schools, was a Chipotle bar line. It was very successful with the kids. They loved it. They could choose if they wanted to just do the brown rice, or if they wanted to put it in a tortilla. So that's something that we're working on, trying to come up with ideas and ways that we would be able to do that here at the Northfield High School, and see how it would go. Another thing that we did was the World Language Week. We worked along with the language department, and with our new TV monitors, we were able to put up some fun graphics for the students as they came through the line for each day of the week. We did something different on the television, and then this was out in the main cafeteria, just for them to enjoy their meal, and basically, in all of the different languages, how we would say that or greet with it. Our school lunch heroes, we've had a lot of changes this year in the Child Nutrition Department. I just wanted to throw a photo up there of all of them. At our elementary schools, we have a new kitchen manager at each one of those schools, and then we have several child nutrition staff, and they're all doing a fabulous job. They really care and are dedicated to serving our students these great, wonderful meals. So it's been an honor to work with all of them, and fun to see all of the ideas that they have. With that, the professional standards upcoming for next year, for the 2015-16 school year, we, kind of the last step in the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, is looking at the professional standards for school nutrition employees. And the goal is to aim to institute education and certification standards for school nutrition professionals, so that we can ensure school nutrition personnel have the training and tools that they are needing to plan, prepare, and purchase healthy, safe, and enjoyable school meals for our students. This is going to require minimum annual training for all new and current school nutrition professionals. All directors will need at least eight hours of training. Managers will be required to have six hours of continuing education and training, and then all other staff at least four hours. And one last thing before we get to the budget, we're working on doing some updates with our website, so it's a little more user-friendly for the individuals and families, and then also to add in some fun graphics and pictures, so it's inviting for families to come. So it's inviting for families to come and explore and take a look at what's out on The 2015-2016 budget, we did update the slides for you, and I believe you all have a copy of that. D'Amita?
In the table file.
Board members, the updated files are in your table file.
Yep, those three pages.
So we did update the slides to include the adopted and the revised budget for you, and we also made a change. We updated the total expenditures under the revised budget as well. A revision of the 2014-15 budget was completed due to some unexpected long-term leave of absences within the child nutrition staff. There was also an additional healthcare benefit cost because of increased participation and eligibility to staff. Staff working a minimum of 30 hours per week are now eligible to receive the full district contribution instead of a prorated amount. This change was in part of a district initiative to provide equal health and dental benefits across employment groups. We also revised the 2014-15 food budget based on higher food costs than what were expected. We did see an overall decline in food costs. It just was not as significant as we had previously forecasted. Overall, we've seen a decline, excuse me, as previously mentioned, we saw an increase in both breakfast and lunch participation. We have seen an increase in both breakfast and lunch participation in 2014-15. Breakfast participation increased with paid students approximately 150%. And I had kind of mentioned this before, that we expected that increase to have happened because of the paid kindergarten breakfasts and the reimbursement by state. State reimbursed an additional 30 cents to cover the difference between free and reduced-priced breakfast meals, so that all free and reduced meals would be reimbursed at the same rate. Lunch prices, we also saw that the state did an additional 40 cents, which was a 10%, so we saw a 10% increase in reduced meal lunch participation due to that 40 cent reimbursement for state to cover the difference between free and reduced-priced meals. This reimbursement rate was, per qualified meal, $3.16. The adopted budget included revenues of $1,794,200 and expenditures of $1,884,631. Due to the personnel changes, additional food costs, and revising revenue forecasts with actual participation, we recommend the revised budget has revenues of $1,953,900 and then expenditures of $2,049,789. For our 2015-16 budget update, revenue assumptions, they're based on actual participation because we were able to take values from this current school year and project them into next school year. At this time, we don't know what the state and federal reimbursement rates will be for next year, but to be conservative, we're assuming that reimbursement rates will remain flat. I do know that they are going to continue to reimburse, fully reimburse for kindergarten, free kindergarten meals, and they will also continue to pay the extra amount for reduced-priced meals for breakfast and lunch for students. Typically, we have increased meal prices every other year. The last time lunch and breakfast meal prices increased was in the school year of 2012-2013. After completing the state-required paid lunch equity tool, they recommended that we increase our paid lunch prices 17 cents per meal to help offset incurred expenses. It's our goal to provide quality nutritious affordable meals for all students that support their growth and development to fuel learning potential, but also understand as a business operation, the need to remain fiscally responsible. To keep up with inflation of wages, healthcare, and food costs, we suggest increasing our meal prices by 15 cents rather than the suggested 17 cents for normal-priced adult and student meals. This has been the typical trend in years past, but it is also below the suggested amount that the state would recommend for us. For our expenditure assumptions, after consulting with our food vendors regarding the expected market for the 2015-16 year, we're assuming that there will be a 4% to 5% food cost increase. Over the last two years, we've spent down our fund balance with the remodeling in the high school cafeteria. This year was the final phase, so we budgeted a decrease of approximately $100,000 less in our expenses under equipment for the school year 2015-16. We proposed a 2015 budget with total revenue sources of $2,496,538. This does include the fund balance plus the revenue sources that we would bring in and expenditures of $1,965,598. We're projecting to end fiscal year 16 with a fund balance of $530,940. Our department goal is to maintain three months of operating expenses based on 12 months of operation for a year. We'd like to maintain a fund balance of $475,000. So again, this concludes my presentation. I just want to thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions. Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have questions? No.
Extremely thorough report. I had questions, but you've answered them.
Good.
I just had a comment that I really appreciate with all of the requirements that you had to take on and knowing that it's a self-sustaining program, that you were able to, you know, you saw the little dip, but you kept working through the recipes, and it's just great to think about that we were able to implement all of this in one year and not, and knowing that self-sustaining still keep that fund balance and everything going. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Rob?
Just curious, having eaten some hikama sloth, that I remember looking in the back of the lunchroom when I was a kid, and you'd see these big slabs of government surplus cheese.
And peanut butter.
You probably don't get government surplus hikama, so, I mean, where do you get this stuff? And does the fact that you're getting nicer and nicer things, does that drive up the cost of actually buying the food each year?
Yep. Great question. It does drive up the cost, but what we are able to do now is through our commodities, each year we're supplemented with so much in commodities. And with those commodity dollars now, we can take a portion of it and apply that to fresh produce. It's called a "dot-on-demand" program. And so we really reserve a large percentage of our commodity funds for that program so that it helps to drive down those costs, and we're able to continue to offer all of the fresh fruits and vegetables for students. Board members? Anyone else?
I had, I just wanted to echo Ellen's comments because I think it's absolutely masterful the way you guys navigate this. And I think you often see in the paper where districts are throwing their hands up in the air and trying to opt out because they can't even get their hands around, their arms and heads and everything else around it. And I think you're right, Pam laid the groundwork, but you've really taken that and gone that much more forward with it. And I think, you know, we just have done an amazing job of being able to work around this incredible number of difficult criteria that they give you, and you do it so extremely well. And I think the fact that our lunch numbers are up really is a testament to that. I wanted to ask what, and it's been explained before, but maybe just briefly, this paid lunch equity calculation and why that calculation would drive the increase next year on the meal cost?
Well, this might be where I have to ask Val to help a little bit. It was a calculation that Val and I did, and we need to take our current prices, and correct me if I'm wrong. We take our current prices, and then we really base it off of October meals that we've served for, was it 2014 and then 2012? I mean, we went back a couple of years. Yeah, where we have to go back and enter in what our food costs are and the amount of meals served. And then we also enter in kind of what our fund balance is and our expenditures and everything. And then that way, they calculate out what we need to have as a base price. And they've set a cap where you have to typically do at least 10 cents a year is what they would recommend doing. But because Northfield has been very fiscally responsible, we've been able to kind of justify doing that every other year and then really looking at not reaching that cap of the 17 cents, but staying at the 15 cents. I don't know if there's...
So I'm sure you're all very surprised that the state is issuing more guidance and more spreadsheets to track things. But basically, they say you don't have to raise your meal prices, but you have to prove that you're going to be able to afford it with your other sources of income. So the fees we bring in from students, and it's this elaborate, like, seven-tab spreadsheet where you have to put in a bunch of different calculations and track your carryover. And so since we had not increased prices, you know, we've been doing it every other year, and based on the way the numbers were looking when we dug into the detail, we felt it was appropriate based on that recommendation and just the way we were looking at the numbers.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I know, so you're required by the state to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We're not required to raise prices. We would just have to document that we weren't going to be damaging the fund balance and basically had other sources, and would have to basically document and prove that. But for the long-term stability of her program, we really felt it was necessary, so.
Okay, good. Thank you. Well, and that fund balance obviously has been, you know, really beneficial in the way that it's allowed us to replace equipment and even update and remodel. So my question on that line is, do you see beyond this next year what maybe some of the major type of equipment replacements you have to do or remodeling projects that you're kind of maybe kicking around with? You know, I know not spending a lot of the fund balance this next year, but then beyond, where that fund balance will be there?
Right. You know, to be honest, that's not something I've thought much about, only being here at such a short time.
That's not a fair question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. I wish I had some great idea.
Oh, no, that's fine. And I didn't need to put you on the spot. I just wondered, is there, you know, a major oven going out somewhere that all of a sudden...
Sure, yeah. Because I know that equipment's very expensive, so. Right, yeah. I do know that each of the kitchen managers has their wish list of items, and we do have a few dish machines and different things like that that, you know, are getting older, but nothing is expected to go. So, but it would be nice for us to be able to have that in case we need to use it.
Yeah, absolutely. The good stewardship of that fund balance is excellent. Okay, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. Okay.
I think the reality always with this is that by maintaining a good fund balance, you are always prepared. Because with any of those major pieces of equipment, a stove, you know, a dishwashing machine, whatever, are very pricey, and you can't run your lunch program without a dish machine that sterilizes the dishes. You can't run your lunch program if you don't have ovens that are working appropriately. So having the dollars in place to do that always puts us in such a better position than in some districts I have known through the years where they were consistently having to take money from their general fund to subsidize their food service program. And we just have not had that situation. That's not been our operating style. And as you know, over the last several years, we've put over $100,000 a year into remodeling and updating kitchens in various buildings across the district. So, yes, we are, we have a smaller amount for this next year because I think, again, we want to get that fund balance tightened up, but that doesn't keep us then from looking another year down the road at what maybe is the next area or the next project. I think the other thing that's really important, I think, is, and several of you have mentioned it, there has been a lot of pressure across the state in various districts over the size of the portions, trying to figure out how do you get the calorie numbers down? How do you get the saturated fats down? How do you get the sodiums down? And I think our child nutrition program has really worked very hard and has been very creative in terms of thinking about doing that. And also because now we have in almost every building multiple lines that kids can go through, the choice thing is the key. I think all of us remember as kids, you came in, you got in the lunch line, it got sopped on your plate, and you had one option. Or you got the peanut butter and jelly sandwich, maybe was the other option. But now we have so many different ways that students can find something that really works for them, that I think it really helps us. And realistically, I think over the years, we've also really tried to kind of keep tabs on how kids are feeling about the food that they're getting, and if they're saying, you know, they really like something or they don't like something, they're thinking about how to make it better and how to make it work better. And the whole idea of even using the quote-unquote, what did you call that? It's not leftovers. You called it...
Oh, yeah.
You have another, you had another name for it.
Unforecasted.
The unforecasted, okay. That, you know, creative ways of looking at that. All of us eat leftovers at home that come out of our refrigerators from the day before. And obviously, when you get down to things that are repackaged and are set up so that kids can see them, and they are all covered with gravy, which you can't have anyway, you know, that I think we have a much better chance of getting a good use of all of the food and having the least amount of waste that we can. So I think food service folks have done just a phenomenal job from Stephanie through all of the managers, through all of the food service staff. They've just done a great job for us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And I'm going to add one thing about, that she didn't talk about. We did actually have a comparison of all of the school districts. Was it just the Big Nine?
No.
Or just some around our area?
Yeah.
And what they're proposing for their rate increases. And ours was in the middle, and even at our final price, we were not, you know, we were pretty much just in the middle. There were a couple of schools that were doing like 25 cent increases, so just know we took that into consideration as well, so. And I would echo how delicious it is. We have a train that leaves the district office at 11:19 every day to go down to the salad bar, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other...
I would just use the keyboard. I'll get it.
Just the arrows on the bottom?
Yep.
So our next item for discussion and report is the proposed 2015-16 non-operating fund budgets. Valerie Mertz Storpe, District's Director of Finance.
All right. Well, I feel like Stephanie's showing me up with the food a little bit, and the material's not nearly as exciting. So I'm going to apologize in advance for that, but thank you for having me. I can't really believe that we're doing this already. It seems like we're just here doing budgets, but first, I'm going to talk about the debt service fund. As you may remember, the debt service fund is strictly for our debt, debt payments. The revenue that comes in, we are required by state statute to levy 105% of our debt payments. And the, we can basically just pay the principal and interest and any miscellaneous fees we have for processing that debt. So it's pretty straightforward. This is our current principal and interest schedule for the 15-16 school year. These are all known debt schedule payments. We have six outstanding issues that will be totaling $4.4 million in principal, $1.1 million in interest, for a total of about $5.5. And this is our annual maturity schedule, so this is all of our six outstanding bonds through the end of their life. You may have noticed that we do have two coming due, one this year will be done, paid off in February, and then one in 2017 as well, I believe. But even though those are coming up, you can see we've structured our debt payments so that it's consistent for our taxpayers, so they're not seeing a large swing in their tax payments. And you also... And you also saw something a little similar to this, I think, with your discussions around the facilities study and kind of where we're at with that. So the revenue, as you can see, is primarily the property tax levy. And the thing I do want to point out here is that you can see each year has declined. And that is a direct result of those refundings that we did several years in a row. We saved about 5.6 million, I believe, over the course of the life of the bond. So that can be seen, we are levying less to the taxpayers each year, which is a great thing. And a little bit of interest and then just a little bit of the state credits is really all that we're going to see. The 2012-13 obviously looks a little bizarre on there, but that is due to that refunding. We actually had two refundings that year. And so that really makes the revenue look a lot higher than the five, 5 million's a lot more normal of what we would expect. Expenditures, again, just principal and interest and fees. The 13-14 and 12-13 years are the last payment of those refundings, which is why they look higher. The five is, again, is really a normal operating status for a debt service or for our debt So we are projecting the 5.4 in the revenue for next year and expenditures of about 5.5, which is again why we levy the 105% to just cover any of those years where it might be off a little bit. So we are projecting to end next year at about 1.6 to shy 1.7. Again, very normal, the 11.4 was our last refunding bond. And that's about it. It's a pretty straightforward fund. So do you have any questions, particularly about the debt service?
Board members, are there any questions? No? Okay.
Nope. All right.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep. And so the next one I've got is the fiduciary fund.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's great. Sorry.
She's halfway through.
Yes, sorry.
It's a short one.
I've spoken too many pages.
No worries. So our fiduciary fund, also known as our trust fund, our scholarship fund, there's a couple of different names for it, is basically where we house all of our scholarships. We obviously want to keep those separate and account for them individually to be accountable to the donors of those. We do, the guidance office actually coordinates that whole process and the award ceremony. We do have about 85 scholarships from 50 different donors, which is really incredible. We are the fiscal host for about 50% of those, so some of the donors choose to have the students go directly to them and they write the check to them or the school. So we do about 50% of those. And this one is incredibly stable. We've had a really solid history of reliable donors, which is great. We do have a couple new ones this year. So you can see our gifts are going up a little bit to about 63.3. Again, a small amount of interest on that. And our expenditure is about 67.8. We had a few long-term ones that kind of, we've provided a little bit less where they gave us an amount upfront and we kind of deviate out each year. So we're planning to end at about 130,000 in the fund balance. And as you can see, it's kind of gone down a little bit each year, which is what I would anticipate as we spend on some of those endowment donations that we received for scholarships. But again, very stable, normal. This is the list that I currently have of all of the scholarships that we will be the fiscal host for. And that's obviously the total of the revenue that I had. So again, pretty straightforward, but if you have any questions, I would welcome them.
Thank you. Board members' questions? No, I guess there are no questions.
Easy peasy, I like it.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
All right.
Okay, so we'll move on to items for individual action. The first item is the, goes back to the presentation Stephanie did of the child nutrition budget, and that would be to approve the amendment to the 2014-15 child nutrition budget amendment that she discussed previously. The motion is to approve the revised 2014-15 child nutrition budget as presented. Moved by Noel.
Second?
Second by Ann. Any discussion or questions? No? Okay. Those in favor of the motion to approve the revised 2014-15 child nutrition budget as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action would be the transformational technology recommendation. And we have Kim Briskie, Director of Technology Services.
So basically, you have seen this presentation. This is the exact same presentation from two weeks ago. And I come just to recap the actual recommendation. And so, I'm going to start in this slide, actually. Two weeks ago, we talked about changes to transformational technology, prefaced with all of the mission and the why we do what we do, how that looks when we carry it out and how we might do that. And part of the how comes here. So the programmatic changes that we recommended from the district tech steering committee were restricted App Store access for our students that would start at the beginning of next year, to begin using the Casper management system, which allows that restricted App Store access. That also includes a component of Casper Focus, which is the classroom management tool allowing teachers to guide students in what they are using on their iPads during class. And then we talked about supporting courses where there's a great deal of writing in terms of providing wired sets of keyboards that could be checked out to classrooms. We have wireless printing up and running. That's a shift since last time I was here. That has been working and so it is in place already. And then looking at tools to help writing classes format when they need really particular formatting for things like MLA formatting. And that would include using Microsoft Office online and not as a district-wide solution, but as, in order to help teachers learn how to do that if it's something that they need. We heard loud and clear at the listening session that families would like to know more about technology in general, how it's used in school and how they can monitor it at home. And so providing some of those family resources is already on my to-do list. Some ideas sketched out for how we might communicate some of those resources to families and provide even some events that are at school for parents to come in and try using iPads and learning more about how we are using technology at school. And then the, maybe the biggest change would be discontinuing the use of the proxy server for filtering off-campus. And I would like to reiterate that this is a change that is for filtering only outside of school. All devices will be filtered on the school internet when in the building. And really, the reason for it is that it's been problematic in causing outages with our internet to our iPads and it's caused certain things that we want students to be able to access to not function even when the filter is in place in school. So just the extra steps of going through that proxy. For example, Tuesday morning after my last presentation, we had a classroom where students couldn't log into SchoolAgree. The thing that fixed it was turning off the proxy server. And so that kind of service that, it's a service that interferes with a bunch of what we're trying to do. So in place of that, though, those parent resources and the line item above would be a very big need in terms of teaching families how to filter from home because that is possible on every home network. And so we can teach that to families so that they can put in place the right level of filtering for their, for their needs. And we've heard also from families that we filter too much, that we filter too little. And so perhaps turning that into some family control would allow for a little bit better management in the end, anyway. The iPad recommendation is the three-step lease renewal, starting this summer with iPad minis that would come for staff, fourth and fifth grade. And then the next steps in January and then in the following July. So I know you have seen this in the past.
I've heard.
$422,000 per year. The superintendent's recommendation or the motion also includes implementing programmatic changes that will restrict students' access to Apple's App Store on student IDs, provide sets of keyboards available for classroom checkout, beginning with the new student iPad lease, and discontinuing the district's filtering of student internet access outside of school networks. Motion to approve. Is there approval of the motion? I'm sorry. Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Rob. Questions and comments from board members? Ellen?
So I know you talked us through this at the last meeting, but could you talk a little bit more about the steps in the lease renewal? What I'm getting confused about is what happens in January?
Yep. What happens in January, it would be that we would get iPad Air Ts. There'd be 2,650 of them, which would be sufficient for all staff as well as all of our sixth through 12th graders. And that's based on the prediction that a new iPad comes out in October and lowers the price of the iPad Air 2, so it becomes affordable for us. And then it overlaps then with our iPad 2s that we currently have for our students. The staff ones will have already gone back at the end of the school year. But that would give us devices that would be up to date and that would last for a foreseeable future of up to four years and that would replace those iPad 2s in the event that they are not functioning well on iOS 9, which also comes out in the fall. So it's being ready to replace those at a time when they might be needed for the functionality of the device. I will also say one more thing about those iPads. All of the new iPads, if you, if you're familiar with Apple devices, iPads for, for most of them have a wider, what they call a 30-pin charging port. All of the new ones have the smaller lightning port. That would be all of the new iPads that we would get from now on would have that newer port. And when we talk about wired keyboards, purchasing wired keyboards that are going to function for a, for a long duration with our iPads, I would like to purchase that smaller port so we're not buying adapters and having issues with functionality of those keyboards. And having the new student ones in place in the middle of the year as needed by our, by our teachers and by our students and being able to use that updated keyboard to support the writing would be a really helpful piece, too.
So if I'm understanding, so that in January, the staff would turn in their minis and they would get the new iPad Airs, assuming the October came out. And then with the students, it says gradually, so the students would gradually, you'd have some sort of process?
Right. I think it would be on an as-needed and as were capable basis of doing something like that during the school year. And the staff, I would allow staff to choose if they wanted to just keep a mini, if they want to change to the Air 2, if they would like to make that change right away in January or if they would prefer to wait till the end of the school year. I think all of those are options.
So then the K3 wouldn't be until July, so those minis would just kind of gradually...
They would filter in as available. So K3 would start with nine per classroom because they would get the current fourth and fifth grade ones down into the K3 classrooms. And then we would be able to choose, to move some of the minis as they were available into those classrooms throughout the year to get them up to the one for every two students.
Thank you.
Other questions? Rob?
I guess, well, you know, I've kind of been a skeptic if it asked and I appreciate the work you've done to listen and sort of communicate with teachers, some of whom who, I mean, teachers have said to me, we stopped filling out the surveys because we don't think that we're going to listen to. And I think, you know, the work that you've done, I think there's progress made to increase the trust on that, which is good. So then my, I guess my question is, a lot of the things while you were doing that in this process came, resulted in the idea to restrict the App Store and to do the Casper Focus, the wireless keyboards. I mean, I heard from a lot of those teachers, we can't wait on it. So, and it's, so I guess my question is, the thing that I see missing here is the ongoing effort to review this because so many good things came out of this process. It seems like this is a process that should continue to be ongoing and that you would get this kind of feedback all the time and that is not part of this proposal. So I'm just wondering what the plans are for making this a continuous improvement-type thing.
Sure. You know, it's a good question because I hadn't actually thought about it in terms of needing a new recommendation of what we're doing for transformational technology. But in terms of ongoing program review, that is already in place with annual technology surveys. And so those give staff a chance to respond to their professional development needs being met, the usage in their classroom and what the, how, how the tech team responds in terms of service, their needs for instruction. And in the conversations, I think you're, you're right on, that the conversations that have come out of this have benefited all of us. And when you say you've been a skeptic, I usually am appreciative to a certain extent, right? Appreciative of a skeptic's voice that keeps us sharp, that says, you know, make sure we're doing the right thing for kids and it really vets the decision-making process. And so that I would, I would foresee as an annual conversation at least. It's not more frequent in terms of ensuring that our teachers have what they need to teach well for students to be successful in their classrooms.
You know, Rob, I would hope, too, that, I think especially in these last couple of years, the focus has been on the technology. And you know, all along, our focus has been to get the focus off the technology. It was new, it was different, it was disruptive in both good and bad ways. And my hope would be that ongoing program review also comes through our standard curriculum review. You know, as we start talking, as different areas come up and as the tool becomes more embedded and more consistently used as people continue to develop their sense of efficacy, my hope is that the bigger review comes with the curriculum side in terms of that we stop looking at it as a device and start looking at it as, oh, here's one of the tools that I have in my tool, just along with textbook and other pieces to it. So that is one of my hopes as we transition, is that we remove the focus from the technology, always with a listening ear, you know, to that, but also making sure that the review is about not the device itself, but what are we doing with the device? More importantly, what are students doing with the device? Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, because I mean, there's been kind of focus, we got this one device, how do we make this work for all these various things? And like, now we have to add the wireless keyboards, which...
And they're wired keyboards, just, yep.
The wired, sorry, wired keyboards. So I mean, it's like, how do we fit all of these tasks into this one thing? And then I think the question has to be what tasks are right for this and what tasks are not right for this? So, I mean, I've talked to Matt about this, this both words on screen, data reading in digital world. I mean, I think reading on a device changes the way reading is done. So we have to be very careful. I mean, we're right at the beginning of this. We, so I think it's okay to go forward cautiously, but to be, not be so optimistic about every, we're going to make everything work equally well. And there's, I mean, I think if you want to do deep reading, you do it in book, if you want to find information task, you do it on the device. And so thinking about what the appropriate uses are rather than just trying to fit everything into this device.
And personalization, the thing we talk about personalization, right? And people talk about personalization except for what other people want to do. That's often how it works. But personalization should mean just that, you know? And one of the things that we learned is concern over that we reviewed our communication because people thought, well, everything, we can't use paper. And well, we did focus on digital content. That was an important piece because we have a new tool. But we need to trust people to make instructional decisions, that if this particular project is better in this way, well, we trust these people, you know, we trust our teachers with children, we should be able to trust them with that instructional judgment. And that's a piece we've all learned, you know, in terms of just really clarifying and talking that through. And then personalizing in the way that if a child needs something a certain way, we can try our best to make sure that they have it in that way. And with the tool, we have many more options than we did before, which I think is good.
Actually, I have a follow-up question for...
Jeff?
The follow-up question for, Rob, just to follow your point, your thinking on that, what is your greatest fear? And if that happened, then how would we react to that?
I don't know. It's hard, I think it's hard to know what to fear because we're so early in the process that I think we just need to move forward carefully and think when we take this step, what are the consequences? And continue, I mean, one of the teachers at one of the listening sessions at high school that I was at, that you had, one of the teachers said, whose job is it to review all of the new research that's coming out and be aware of all of these things? Because there, books like this are coming out all the time and there's studies done of the effects of using devices... of the effects of using devices on the brain. I mean, multitasking actually changes the chemistry of your brain. So I think you just need to be aware of this and keep up with that research as well, and have the devices, but just make sure you know where your next, you know, that you're not unintentionally causing harm with what you're doing. And, you know, most of the teachers that I talked to specifically were teachers who were working with struggling students, students with extra challenges, and their feeling was that these devices actually were an additional challenge on top of their academic challenges, now they had to figure out the technology. If we know that, then we, I think we just need to figure out what support, extra support we give to those students and teachers. I think, you know, as you go forward, you can solve problems as, as you have already. It's just being aware of the trends and the research so that you can anticipate some of those things.
Sure. I would respond to that, saying that that, that research is all of our job, and so, and it's all of our responsibility to respond as is best for our kids all of the time, so.
Okay. Board members, other questions or comments? Okay. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second, so we're ready to vote on the motion that, to basically approve the four-year lease of the iPads and the Casper Mobile Device Management System. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just want to take a second, Kim, thank you. I mean, this plan clearly was evidence of extraordinary, extraordinary effort on your part and the district steering technology committee to put this together. It was really, I think, Rob, you said it well, you listened well, you responded well, there were numerous challenges, you never, you faced a lot of obstacles, and you were, you just left no stone unturned. And I know, I appreciate your effort, and it was no easy feat, so. And I think it's super exciting that we're moving forward with this, and we think of where we were two years ago, just stepping forward with this, and now we're, we're continuing to grow it, and I think it's really exciting for our district. So thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. So we will move on to the next item for individual action, which is community services resolution for fund transfer. Erin?
Erin is ready to go.
Sure. So as you can see, of the resolution that's in your packet referring to the Minnesota law that gives us the opportunity through the end of this fiscal year to do a fund, a permanent fund transfer within the community services budget. And there was, there's been, as, there's a couple of kind of criteria. It could not increase the state aid obligations to the district or result in additional property tax authority for the districts. The funds could also not be transferred out of the community service fund. There's also the opportunity in the law at states, or the food service fund, or other reserve counts for staff development. This, again, for the purpose of this resolution, it just focuses on the community service fund. And then the school board approves that the transfer, after adopting it, this resolution does not, will not diminish the instructional opportunity for students. So as you see, we are looking to transfer $40,000 from the reserve fund, from the early childhood family education to the reserve fund for school readiness. And if you remember, the community service budget presentation is in two weeks, at our next board meeting. But we do have, had a significant fund balance in the early childhood category, and we're looking, had been seeing a negative fund balance in the school readiness category, and so this would help us to get those two in a little bit better place for both.
Okay. Board members, the motion is to approve the resolution for fund transfer, which authorizes the transfer of $40,000 from the reserve fund for early childhood family education to the reserve fund for school readiness. Approval of the motion?
Aye.
Moved by Noel. Second? Second by Ann. Any questions? Okay. This is a resolution, so it requires a roll call vote? Harvey?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Cornell?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
And Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. The next item for individual action is the resolution for termination and non-renewal of probationary licensed staff. Dr. Richardson?
Sure. Again, in your materials, you have the resolution concerning termination, non-renewal of a group of our probationary licensed staff members effective at the end of the 2014-15 school year. And so these are individuals that at this point, we are proposing a non-renewal of their, of their contracts in their probationary status. And at this point, I think it's pretty clear in terms of basically the FTS involved and the positions that are also involved in those particular productions.
Okay. The motion is to adopt the resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the probationary licensed teachers effective at the end of the 2014-15 school year. Is the motion, is there approval of the motion? Ellen? Moved by Ellen. Second? Second by Noel. Any questions or discussion? This is also a resolution, so requires a roll call vote. Let's change it up. Stratton?
Aye.
Cornell?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
And Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on, then, to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of items in the, in the table filed to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping?
I don't know. But I do have a question regarding the authorization to waive the ban of fireworks or ammunition in school districts. Does that apply to the one day and to the requister of that one day?
That is correct. And it is the exact same authorization that you've granted now for at least the last eight, nine years. Ever since, basically, the, starting with the historical society's decision to work and take over that activity. But yes, it would be, again, to use the middle school property for that single day to provide a community fireworks display, and again, with all of the same requirements and expectations in terms of setup, fire watch, cleanup, all the pieces that go with that.
Part of my nervousness on this one is the fact that it also waives ammunition, which someone may wish to read into it, but not have the capacity to.
No. No, but I think part of the frame, in terms of how we have to frame this, because some of the larger fireworks pieces are actually shells. You know, that, that basically, the larger fireworks that, that go up and then basically burst our shells with smaller explosive devices, and then with little parachutes and all the other pieces that make lovely displays.
And hardly winged.
Yes.
One other point I wanted to make on the consent grouping, you'll see there's a gift agreement, Bridgewater PTL for $25,000 for new playground equipment at Bridgewater, so we thank those people. That was obviously a great deal of fundraising and support by Bridgewater families, and those kiddos are going to get some pretty cool stuff. So we thank them for that. So if there's no other discussion or comments on the consent grouping, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen. Second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reminder of future meetings, Monday, May 11th, 2015, and then due to the Memorial Day holiday, the meeting, second meeting in May will be Tuesday, May 26. What's that? Motion to adjourn?
Right, move it.
Moved by Noel. Second? Second by Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.